Our next item on the agenda is a presentation of our transgender, gender nonperforming transition students protocol. Dr. Garso, if you have a train to carry with you. Sure, I'm happy to.
So in 2017, the administration put in place protocols for addressing the needs of transgender and gender nonperforming students in accordance with statute. And that policy has been, a protocol has been made available to teachers, students, staff members, families, basically anybody listening to guidance when dealing with those issues. It has recently come up again as a topic in the community. And prior to the committee considering any further action in terms of policy, to hear from Attorney Carroll on the genesis of this, the law behind it, how it's putting out in communities perhaps, and in a decent context, if that's what you're sure.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. And thank you, Dr. Garso, for asking me to make a presentation about your transgender protocol. As Dr. Garso stated, this has been in effect in Westerly since 2016. And let me make it perfectly clear, because you are going to hear from people that this does not follow the law, and that could be a corollary of truth. Let me give you the law that this is based on. So Rhode Island law Title 16, 16-38-1.15 gives the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education responsibility for enforcing this particular section. And this section is on discrimination because of sex. So what the transgender policy is, is a policy to make sure that there is no child that is being discriminated against. Now, you may hear, well, if we are giving transgender children these rights, what about every other child? And my answer to that is, every child has rights, whether you're transgender or you're not. This policy just identifies how we make sure that a transgender child is not discriminated. So Title 16, again, 16381.15 allows the Commissioner of Education to enforce the anti-discrimination section of the law. In so doing, the Commissioner of Education, through the Board of Education, basically has a regulation. The regulation, again, Rhode Island regulation, talks about anti-discrimination, and once again, gives the Commissioner the right to identify procedures and protocol and give you some type of direction. The section of the regulation is under Title 20, Chapter 30, and it's a civil rights regulation. I will make these documents available to the superintendent, so that you can all have copies of them. So there's a statute. The statute then goes to a regulation. The regulation basically says, the Commissioner, pursuant to Rhode Island general law 1638-1.15, has the authority to propagate regulations to enforce the statutory requirements prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression in school. So we have a statute, we have a regulation. Then based on the statute or the regulation, the Commissioner of Education then gave out procedures that districts should follow. That information has been on the Rhode Island Department of Secondary and Education website. This guidance has been around since 2016. What the guidance is saying is that every school department in the state, as of 2018, needed to have either a protocol or a policy. Your district has had a protocol for all these years. Now, let me explain the difference. If you adopt a policy, as a school committee, you have a right to formulate a policy. That's one of your jobs. Your job as a school committee is to develop a policy. Your job as a school committee is to employ a superintendent. Your job as a school committee is to worry about the budget. Absent a policy, any authority of how you run the district is given to the superintendent. The superintendent has a right and authority. He's like the CEO of your school district. So in the case of a protocol, his job is to enforce that protocol, write that protocol, make sure that protocol is in compliance with any direction that he gets under statute, regulation, or from the Department of Education. Protocol that you have in place pretty much follows the guidance that we received from the Commissioner, that again, has been around for quite a few years. The protocol is something that is looked at by the Commissioner of Education. As a matter of fact, in August of 2023, she sends a directive to every single superintendent in the state, saying that she was going to review every district's policy and/or protocol to make sure that it is in compliance with the guidance that has been presented by her. Westerly's protocol, protocol has not yet been looked at. I think it's only a matter of time. She's doing like four or five overalls so far that I know of. I've been in contact with the person, her representative, the assistant commissioner, and we've talked about different policies and how she's going to look at them. I suggest to you that you need to have something in place, as your protocol is, so that you are in compliance with statute, regulation, and guidance. And I say that because the Commissioner of Education can do lots of things, and if you weren't in compliance, you could take action against your district. Not that she said she would, but in the past, there have been times when she's threatened to withhold state aid, take state aid, do things like that. So I urge you to understand that this protocol, which is in, which definitely follows her guidance, needs to be in effect, or you could always go one step further and adopt that as a policy. I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Attorney Carroll. Name any other committee of questions for Attorney Carroll.
I thank you very much, Ms. Carroll. Action against the district, what, like what?
The Commissioner of Education can maybe like it. She can...
This is making my life difficult.
Okay, so I understand that. And I understand that this policy, or this, you know, this protocol might be difficult for you to accept. But let me assure you that we haven't had any issues with this protocol. The kids, it's not an issue, it's an issue with adults, it's not an issue with children. And I believe that your issue probably is, let me tell you what I think your problem is, I think your problem is, or your concern is. Okay, so we have a protocol, and we're given a right to a transgender child. What happens to the non-transgender child that might be in the locker room, that might be in the bathroom, or something like that? Is that what's concerning you?
That's one of the concerns. I have a 15-year-old daughter in the high school, and to think that an 18-year-old male could walk into her bathroom, although our high school students can't use the bathroom these days, but if she walked, if he walked into the bathroom, she would have no protection. To me, that's completely wrong. My main issue, my main issue with this protocol is the keeping the secret from the parents. Are we discussing this or asking questions?
You can ask me, I can answer.
So I don't, I think it's completely wrong. We can't even give a student an Advil or a Tylenol right now, and you're going to have people who are not qualified to deal with these kind of difficult issues, hiding an identity from their parents. And if that, if the situation is deemed that dangerous at home, that you have to then detransition this kid to go home to their parents, I think that's where we would be, I think that's where we would be at fault and derailing some protecting the student if we're sending them home to a house that somebody thinks isn't safe to them. I will also say that the... There's absolutely no reason, I think, I think that this also is compounding the mental health issues that we keep talking about constantly. I think this is a confusing situation. I think this is encouraging students to go against their parents, and that's my major concern with this protocol.
Let me just address a little bit of it. I'll just agree with you as a parent. I want to know every single thing my child ever did every single day. I know. And as far as elementary students go, we absolutely have to discuss the situation with it. If the child in the elementary school came in and said, I want to be, I want transgender to avoid, first of all, we make this to the parent. You're right. On the secondary...
I read some...
Yeah. On the secondary, the concern is, there are children, there are children that are transgender that may be scared to death to tell their parent. We cannot automatically pick up the phone and call their parent, but all of the counseling we do, all of the work we do with the children, is to encourage them to tell their parent. The same way, let's take for example, a child goes to their guidance counselor and says, I'm pregnant. Don't tell my mother. We can't pick up the phone and tell, call the mother, but we can encourage them and work with them and explain to them why they should tell their mother.
But in the meantime, but in the meantime, hide it from, let them come to school and change their clothes, then put makeup on, or do whatever they want to do with this identity, and then send them home to an unsafe environment.
I understand that, but...
And what do you mean, we can't? So when you said that Angelica and Flatey Green can make our lives difficult, what exactly could she do if we said, disagree with this, I want to rescind this protocol, and we'll write our own policy that will protect all students, that will immediately involve the parents in any of this kind of discussion, or for that matter, take the discussion out of the school? This is something in my opinion that should be a public education system. This is between parents, guardians, and their children. This is creating a huge... I don't know what the word is. This is breaking up, this is taking the kids and their relationship with their family and breaking it apart. And I don't think that this is the place for a public school. And I can't imagine that anybody sitting up there thinks, a boy should be in the girls' room, a boy should be in the girls' locker room, or that some guidance counselor in the high school should be hiding the fact that a student is so distraught that they're changing their identity and want to hide it from their family. This should not be hidden from their parents, and this should not be going on, and we need to, what can, we just found out we didn't have enough bus drivers. Well, what did we do? We said, oh, we don't have bus drivers. They said, okay, fine. So what are they really going to do if we say, we don't want to accept this? We want to make our own. And I feel very strongly about it.
Thank you. Ms. Garso?
So I don't know, I heard you say that we can't have our own policy. Did I, we can.
No, you can, you can take this in, you can write your own policy. But you're supposed to be in compliance with the guidance from the Commissioner.
Oh, so the policy is not in compliance with the protocol, there's supposed ramifications?
I mean, the Attorney General's office would be contacting you and saying, you're not, somebody could report, and you'd say, you're not following the law. There's a statute that's in that right.
All right, understood. So I'm looking, this might be more for Dr. Garso, but page, because without a policy, he's been under the guise of this, this protocol. Page seven, under restroom, locker room, changing facilities. I don't think we are operationalizing this death now. Because my understanding is, my question is, in the high school, I know at least, that if there's a student who's uncomfortable using the restrooms as they are now, that they can use a restroom near the nurse's office?
Any student can. And that's, so you referenced that, and the language under that says, all students, all students, whether they're transgender or, this was a new term today, cisgender, whatever term we use, all students are entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms, and changing facilities that are sanitary, safe, and adequate, so that they can comfortably and fully engage in their school program and activities. So if a transgender female isn't comfortable using the male bathroom, female bathroom, we make accommodations, we have gender-neutral accommodations throughout the building. It also speaks to the same issue with regards to locker rooms. We don't force anybody to use any particular locker room, but we don't put this in position where we have males and females in a locker room at the same time. We don't have situations where we have males and females in a locker room at the same time. The bathrooms in my house are gender-neutral. We don't use them at the same time. We do have ways to work these things out, and we have done that successfully for a number of students and families over the years. We haven't had an issue in the seven-plus years that this has been in place.
So my question is, I know the high school with practices, that's in the handbook too, the high school handbook? I don't know if it's in the middle school handbook, because I haven't looked, I don't think it is. But what happens to these preschool kids that this is impacting? Do we have this accommodation at every school, preschool, elementary, all the elementary buildings? So this is not just high school, right? Even though it's ratified in the handbook?
Right, this is at all the buildings. And we have had, we have had transgender students come through the district. We work with the families. We do, as Attorney Carroll mentioned, we would first want to have a conversation with the student, young man, young lady, and say, all right, I understand your concerns about what's going to happen at home when this is shared, but let's talk about how we help you facilitate, how we help facilitate that conversation between you and parents. There's no intent on the part of the administration to hide anything from parents, but it's a difficult situation, and the pregnant student, or the student who is gay, those are good examples. If, if it's going to cause, you know, great hardship when they go home and share this information at home, we have to respect that, but we also have to work with them and say, I get that, but we might have to have a conversation, so let's talk about holding off, get ready for that conversation, and support you in that. We don't have a choice.
One more thing. So if a student were to, I, with Ms. Whitehall, like, if a student is feeling unsafe at home because of these issues, why would we not call DCYF in that case? Because the student is mandatory reporting, does not come into play?
We have a community report when we believe child abuse is taking place.
Is that a form of child abuse? If somebody's being ignored at home, being told, you're clean. So this is very dicey and difficult.
If a student is going to be thrown out of the house, or if the student is going to go home and, worst-case scenario, be beaten, or what happens, of course, that's a DCYF call. But if, if somebody, I mean, we have, we have many, again, gay people in the community, many of them struggle mightily when it's time to have that conversation with their families that they can't come out. If it's going to be, something that's going to be really difficult for them, our role is to encourage them to have that conversation. This is your family, after all, you're going to have to talk to them at some point. Again, let's talk about how we can support you in that and help you make that conversation.
I guess I do have one more question. You said, we, would it be trained, licensed professionals, not just, no offense to classroom teachers, they're trying to do their jobs every day, and not everybody is equipped to have these conversations.
Of course.
We're talking about social workers, psychologists, behavioral interventions that would be more of a precaution.
Nurses?
Yes.
Yeah, the nurses.
Yes, yes. Because in a lot of cases, the children use the bathroom near the nurse's office, so... And again, we protect all children. You know, again, the policy is for transgender, but whether you're getting, you know, that's more maybe 1% of the multivariate population, we need to protect the other 99% too. So we need to make sure that everything we put in place is available for every child and children.
Ms. Garso?
Thank you for presenting. So I think something, and we've heard this come up now, is, like you said, this protocol, it sounds to me that it's guidance for what should happen, but I assume this is something that can, case-by-case basis, if, you know, a situation does present itself and maybe it's not defined in this protocol, I assume there are things in place to, for the administration to make the correct decision.
I believe that if you have knowledge that a child is transgender, then yes, it's a case-by-case basis, and the schools are putting it in place, meeting with the child, putting a protocol that works for that child that's in place. Some children, I mean, let's keep in mind what these poor children are going through. Let's keep in mind what their mental and emotional health is if they feel as though they need to be transgendered. So we need to put something in place for that child individually, and more likely than not, they're going to be using the unisex bathroom, or the private bathroom, or they have a lot of change in front of the rest. It's not, I mean, the protocol's in place because we have to follow it, but that doesn't mean that that's what we do for all our children.
And then just one more thing, so this might be an additional thing. So I think there's, I think there might be a thought that, like, if tomorrow, a student who's been identified, that they show up tomorrow and says, today I'm going to go in the restroom, that's not how this protocol works, right?
No, that's not how it happens.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Am I correct that all districts have this protocol in place? Because, you know, you can be opposed to it, you can be for it, regardless of state law.
Every district, one state law has to have this in place, yes.
And, you know, I get really, very real about the, about the athletics and that. Like, what is, Rhode Island's last thing, do they have policy or is it protocol?
So we, we have no authority over whether a transgender boy plays on boys' team or a transgender girl plays on girls' team. That comes to the end of the last league. Our hands are, we don't touch it, we're not involved, that's up to them. They have, as principals know, you have your own set of directives, and it's the end of the last league that says yes or no, who can play that, whatever.
But is, is that policy or is that protocol for them?
In the high game, it's not on my shirt. I think that's, whatever they want to do, they do.
And my last thing is, for people who are, you know, meaningly opposed, or even in favor of this protocol, what do you suggest, what do you suggest for them to, you know, somebody reached out to me, and I said, just, you know, going with the state, you know?
The protocol is based on the guidance that we receive from the Commissioner, who has the authority to develop protocol. She would have to change her guidance. It would come from the Commissioner of Education to change her guidance.
But people are, if people are opposed, can they go to the state level?
That's the only, it's, the state level is the only level that would change the guidance that would then be able to change policies for them, yes.
Thank you.
So to Mrs. Whitehall's points, I, too, I agree with that. I, when this protocol came out in 2017, or '16, I had a senior daughter who was an athlete, and that was what bothered me. I was thinking, okay, so somebody, a male, will be going into the softball locker room, or going into the girls' bathroom. But I think I've asked questions over the years, and what has been stated is that we don't, we absolutely want to accommodate everyone, and those kids, as you said, transgender kids, are going through a really, really rough time, and I am thrilled that the schools can support these kids. But to your point, the other 99%, over the years, the questions I've asked have reassured me that those kids are taken care of too. So if, if there was a cisgender child that had an issue with it, they would be accommodated as well. So that was the thing I was most concerned about, just making sure that everyone is considered, and it's been clear that it has been. The other thing about, the other point about the parents, I, I have a problem with that too, but as Dr. Garso said, it's professionals encouraging the student, the child, and getting them to hopefully converse with their parents. But, yeah, so, yes, you said, does anyone else up here must have an issue? Yes, but I've asked enough questions in the last six years, seven years, whoever's that uncomfortable with it. Thank you.
I think some of the things that, you know, that I think of, because I have some issues with this type of a protocol about having a teen or a daughter. You know, so I definitely see Ms. Whitehall's point on that, and about keeping the parents out of the loop, something that I have definite issue with. Because a child feels like their parents aren't going to be supportive, does not mean that their parents are going to be unsupportive, and that might be just the help that they need, just from their parents. I know my 16-year-old can't sign herself on school. If she doesn't show up, I get a phone call. She didn't show up to a dance that she had bought a ticket for, and I got a phone call from one of the deans, saying, now just let me know your daughter's not here. So, I mean, it seems like we're of the mindset that we're not going to let these kids make all those decisions that they think are best for them. So I'm not sure how this one kind of falls on that round. The other thing that I have more, probably more, bigger issue with, is that the fact that this is coming through the statute, and that the Commissioner does have this right in that, if we would equip a policy that was against, basically what this protocol says, that we would be sanctioned, whatever it might be, might be fined, might be real due to our federal funding, through state aid, or whatever that might be, that really takes away the job of the people sitting up here right now, is that we made a policy where I or she got turned down, and we said, but. So if we're not, if we can't make a policy that certain people, you know, want to have a majority vote on, then, you know, that's kind of taking away from us. You know, left curriculum is kind of being sent out from the state level to us, so we're not even reviewing curriculum anymore. And but, we really get, can't fight the town council, and we can't, we can't give out what we, based on what we feel is appropriate. I feel like this is just another thing, and it just takes away the power of the school committee.
I think one of the things that you need to understand is that this happens so infrequently. You know, we're talking about it right now, but for all you know, there could be transgender children in your school, and you don't even know they're transgender because they became transgender early on, and that notification has to get passed. It's a very infrequent issue that the school deals with. It's very infrequent that a child is going to go to guidance and say, or local social worker, psychologist, and say, don't tell my parents. And that our experts, our social workers and psychologists that are trained to work with these children can encourage the conversation with the parent. So yes, the policy says if the child says, no, we can't tell, but we can encourage, and we do, because obviously it's the best interest of that child to be able to communicate with their parent. And God forbid that we sent a child home and there was an issue, then next week we would be calling DCYF, they were, was, you know, in danger. So again, the policy's in place to protect all children, but it's very infrequent that we even deal with, with these kinds of situations.
Okay, so everything that everybody's saying, Dr. Garso, it had a lot of input on how things are actually handled, if, if everything that we just talked about should be our policy. And for Brian to be threatening with sanctions or money, or we've never had to do it, but we'll do it, you know, let's give it back. I cannot sit up here and just say, oh, well, he said this is what we have to do, because I still question the validity of the fact that this is guidance for them. Just like what happened with this mask mandate, that was all guidance. The lawsuit that I was involved in turned out that that was guidance, that there was never any ability for the state to mandate masks, and now they've stepped back and said, three years later, that if we ever have to do it again, we'll go through all the hearings, we'll do everything the right way that we didn't do it the first time. So we're going to sit here and, and just say, oh, well, there's nothing we can do? This is why we were elected. We need to elevate the stuff that everyone's talking about, this is just how it happens. That's how we want to write it in our policy, because that's why we are here. We're not here to just go, oh, Brian said it, that's what we got to do. This, this is, because this is wrong, and this is happening, Ms. Attorney Carroll. I don't know what moves out that people are not watching or watching, this is happening. People are being assaulted in restrooms. People, 11-year-olds are being forced to share bedrooms on overnight field trips with people of the opposite sex. This is not safety for every kid. This is handpicking and, and changing laws and changing wording to, for this 1% of the population, that if, if, I don't think that we should do it this way. I think that what we should do is all of the things we talked about, the bathrooms are available for anybody to be comfortable. Any child, not that one child is going to have access. Because you know what? The way the policy reads, any child can walk in tomorrow and say, "I'm going to use the girls' room." And you want to know what? That some of the kids we have in our school watching this meeting tonight, I think they're going to have a problem with this now. So we need to get, we need to eliminate, we need to stand up. We need to stand up and say, "The protocols are wrong." If we're going to protect all of the kids in our school, and if we're going to do the right thing by the parents and for the kids, every kid, we need to stand up and create our policy and see what happens. Let's see what Ryan does. Because you know what? Sounds like they're blowing a bunch of smoke and they haven't done anything to anyone. And she's reviewed, what, five policies of districts in three years? We know she's not doing a good job. So let her take her time, get down here to review our stuff, and let's do the right thing.
So in reviewing the protocol or policy, I'm willing to say I've been an expert in this. I appreciate hearing from the attorney to understand things. I even have my own questions about my opinions on certain things that I have seen on here. But what I also recognize is that it does exist and there is a population of people that this policy, this protocol, gives them a safe space to go to. And I completely hear the concern about not telling a parent something. But I think we have to remember, not every student in our school is coming from a home that has love and that is safe for them. And what we keep hearing is, the intention is to get them to a place to have that conversation. To get them to a place to have that conversation. And this is a gateway to be able to set them, to be able to do so. We have to keep that in mind. And then we always put around a conversation behind mental health. We can't talk about mental health and say, "Well, it's just 1% of our population, so too bad, so sad." We have to include them. And I think something we have to learn how to model is, we can absolutely review policy, review protocol, do all of those things, and do it in a sense of saying, who is it that we need to protect, help, save, do whatever? Who is it that we think is not protected by this protocol or policy? And figure out where that goes. So there's nothing wrong with it, but we have to be very careful about the people who maybe this is the only thing that's behind them right now to say, "I can go to guidance counselor and say something." Or, "You know what? I want to tell my parents. I don't know how to do it." Or maybe they're just, they're unsure about where they are in that journey. But we have to be extremely careful about how we set those things up. Because if we have to, God forbid something happens, everyone's going to be sitting back going, "Oh, I really wish that somebody would have liked to..." So we have to set ourselves up to have these conversations with people who can give us help, figure out the language, figure out what, from Ryan, we need to take, what we've been rid of, and all of those things, and understand how it works. But we have to do it with intention and not just, "I want to throw this policy out, and I don't care." Because if we keep doing that, we're going to have a big problem on our hands if something does happen and we didn't have anything in place to figure out how and having access to it.
Okay, so I specifically, very clearly said, everything that everybody's talking about, and I agree with you, but that's what we need to put in our policy. I said, "Let's put our policy together based on what we're saying happens, not based on this stuff that Ryan is sending down." Yes, I said, "Every student, every student." But if every student can feel comfortable by having the bathrooms, the unisex bathrooms that anybody can use, as opposed to a student saying, "I feel more comfortable going into the girls' room," which is what this protocol allows. So then let's be intentional and create the policy that is safe for everybody and not just accept what Ryan has sent us. Because that does not work for everybody.
Other thoughts from Mrs. Gerso?
I have a question from Attorney Carroll. Is Rhode Island among other states that give this kind of authority in their general law to their commissioner of education? Is that something that's done everywhere?
I can't speak for other states.
Why do you know if you just knew?
No, I can speak, that the reason that I gave you the information based on Rhode Island law is because this is what Rhode Island does. Rhode Island does a lot of things different from other states, as other states do things differently from Rhode Island. And as you know, there are states that are, that are definitely not following federal law, changing their protocols and policies. But Rhode Island has a law in place that we need to follow. The only other state law I can give you that's similar is, let's talk about, let's say, like abortion laws. Rhode Island, Rhode Island, several states, a lot of abortions, other states don't. It's state-specific. So again, it's the law in Rhode Island we have to follow because we live in Rhode Island.
But I also haven't looked at the statute that I am very much appreciative of giving us, was aware there was a statute, and I think there's going to be some gray area with some of these statutes. So that's what I'm interested in finding out, which I definitely will as we look into this. But it sounds like, from what I'm hearing my colleagues say, there might be an interest in having, not necessarily having this protocol as our de facto policy. My question is, do we have to rescind? If we were to not follow this as it is, no one's adopted this. He had no other guidance and he followed it. Do we have to rescind this first and then replace it with a policy?
No, the protocol's in place until you write a policy. If you want to write your own policy, you can write your own policy. But until that is in place, you have to keep the protocol in place. What I would strongly urge you to do if you decide to write a policy is let's make sure that it doesn't, that it's, that it doesn't go. If you can make a policy that is broader than the, what we get from the commissioner, but it can't go against what the commissioner says. So let's make sure that, you know, it's a law. It's a law in Rhode Island that makes or is right. You can't violate the law.
Thank you for your presentation. Yeah, you know, I have a good policy, and I understand this is true. But I may have, I may have. But a lot of us, the protocol speaks to working with families, working with children, working with the school system. I think a lot, every policy is going to mirror that. I mean, it's going to almost completely mirror it. Because we want the students to be involved, we want the students and the families to be involved. We want them to be able to be safe in this school. So we're going to have to develop a policy that is going to virtually be the same. And if we don't, then we're going to have a fight with the state. And that's a fight where we're going to move to kind of going against state law. I don't think any attorney to work with the new policy would say, "Well, this policy violates the state law, that's okay with that." I don't think attorney, no one would tell us. I don't think any attorney would tell us that would be okay. So we have many things we need to do. We have budgets, we have curriculum. We can't look back and say, "We did wrong some things." How close would we work on the policy? Are all students being, meant to be needed? Needs to be met. But develop a policy that contradicts state law is just something that we don't really need to discuss. There's no student, no parent who would say, "This policy is making mentally affect my child. My child goes to school being bitter." Now, if that was the case, I'm sure this would pretend we wouldn't have. We don't have told this, he wouldn't report it to us for any kind of changes or resolution. Or if that didn't happen, the parent would have to us, or have legal action. So I don't want to turn something, create something that either pretty much mirrors this policy or puts us up for confrontation that we can't let you. Because it is the law, and if we, yes, we don't have to follow all the laws, but there were repercussions for that. And if we're going to pay, lose hundreds of thousands of dollars for this issue, I think we have our priorities wrong. Yes, revisit this book, make sure it's being properly seen, people are being affected. But getting into a fight over this, I think it just seems unnecessary and in the end, tired of it. Because we're going to be sending messages to people who are concerned about telling their parents that they can come to the school and have an ear for them, someone to speak to, and someone to, that you can tell them that it's okay to tell your parents. We're going to have, create a situation as a fight with the court, where they can't tell their parents, and they can't come to the school, and they have to pretend to be somebody there now.
I just want to be quick with maybe, you know, we have no students of opposite sex or gender or identity sharing locker rooms. Doesn't happen here. We don't have them sharing bottles. We do not have them sharing portfolios. It doesn't, it will not happen. This hasn't been a issue here. Those instances have happened in other communities around the country. They have, I don't know that they have not, but it hasn't been a issue here. And it's not something that's, it's not something that's going on here. It's not something that's why we have it here. It just doesn't happen.
Thank you. I'll make sure that the superintendent has copy of the laws that I presented, that I changed tonight, additions to the guidance formula, so that you have a commission. I'll make sure you have the laws.
Thank you. Okay, now our agenda is open forum. Members of the public who have attended the school committee during the forum, members wishing to speak, members wishing to speak is very beginning. We recognize each people will have five minutes, an additional five minutes if needed, after all, members of the committee who wish to speak have spoken. Committee members will be able to respond if they choose, after all, public comments are completed. This open forum will be on agenda by its own. So anybody who wishes to address the school committee at this time. Get in the back, come on up, just please say your name.
Dr. Meara.
Yeah, come on up.
May I remember? Well, I wasn't going to speak, I just wanted to listen and see what's happening here. But I do want to add a correction. The RIAA, given Section B does have a thing on gender, gender identity. And it does place the unisex bathroom in the school, I'm sure, correctly. And so therefore, you can have, I may have asked him to play for a female school. So it does provide that guidance there. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I was misinterpreted. And I'm not going to go into all the different views. I am concerned about parents not cherry picking, me and cherry picking what they're told. My son, a few years ago, was accused of dealing opium on the high school bus. Rumor gets out there, they're interviewing him, interviewing his friends and colleagues. We weren't told. Now, if I saw something truly about opium business, then I'd want to be notified right away. Because I don't want him getting overdosed and dying, or having committed anyone else. But they weren't told. I will say, the process the school followed was blossomed, and they provided clarity, and had no issues with the ultimate resolution. But again, it's cherry picking, while you're allowed to help parents, not help parents. And then, again, I wasn't prepared to say anything. I've heard bits and pieces of everyone, and Dr. Gerso was saying, you know, the stuff in place. So we are protecting all children, it seems like. So to put something in place that is, to maybe cause more devices and make all children maybe scared from whatever perspective they're coming from, you know, why add that? So again, it sounds like you're all pretty much on the same page that way. So why burden us with it? And then my final thing is, is what? Guidance laws, guidance laws. Which is, the guidance isn't a law. It's a law that Rhode Island, whatever she's called, has to put in a policy. That doesn't mean a policy is translated as law. So again, not being a lawyer, not having time to go through what was referenced here, I'm not sure. But again, we got to be clear, what's guidance and what is law? Well, we have to comply with the law and then what we can recommend based on the guidance of the parents. So I thank you all for your time, and thank you for your contribution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the committee? Come on, please say your name. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much for taking this on. You've obviously really given that power a lot. My name's Michelle Pratella. I'm a retired pediatrician. I had four children come through the Westbury College School System. Our, I have his daughter graduated last year. I just have three points that I want to bring out, which really resonate with other kinds that were offered. Dr. Gerso pointed out that there are gendered bathroom. So that any student who's uncomfortable with sex-assigned bathrooms would, you know, has this option, and they're not singled out. When I was in practice as a pediatrician, it's not just trans or binary identified students. Some students with special needs, social anxiety, whatever, also don't want to use the multi-sol sex-assigned bathrooms. So that's a wonderful solution. And it's also one that I understand has been in place for decades with the Westbury College School System. The issue though, which where Whitehall pointed out, the protocol, page seven, letter F, large letter F, small letter A, does say that gender identity, depending on the student's gender identity, they must be allowed to use the restroom that they identify with. So if you're allowed to tweak it for the community and for our school situation, you can simply say, "This is what we have provided for all students who are uncomfortable with sex-assigned restrooms, sex-assigned locker rooms." And the point is that this bathroom and locker room, and similarly for overnight field trip accommodations, favoring that separation by sex is what best protects all students in terms of privacy and safety, particularly females, which gets to my second point. Schools, although it's state law, schools, when it comes to sports, need to abide by biology. Biology isn't bigotry, biology is reality. And once you get past puberty, males, on average, and when you match males and females for athletic training past puberty, the males will be bigger and faster and stronger than females. And so to allow male-bodied individuals to compete in female sports, the female students are at a disadvantage in terms of fairness and safety. And I think it's important, just in terms of science, sex is determined by sex-determining genes at fertilization. So even if a male-bodied student is being prescribed estrogen, that does not change his genetics. It makes him a weaker male, but he is still genetically a male. And we still, we have, in Leering, Connecticut, the lawsuit was filed on behalf of four female runners against the Connecticut Interstalastic League, and a federal appeal support has revived that case and said they still have standing, so it's still in process of being resolved. And finally, this last point may not be known because it was recent. I agree, I mean, as a pediatrician, you're told things in confidence with adolescent patients. And similarly, this happens with teachers, counselors at school and so forth. And what I hear from Dr. Gerso is how I used to practice that, as a pediatrician, yes, I have to keep things in confidence, but my primary role was as the bridge, I wanted to be a bridge. Not my, my intention was never to keep secrets or to usurp parents. And whether it was drugs, LGBT identification, pregnancy. Fortunately, I always, kids tend to assume the worst about their parents. And so as a pediatrician, I always found that I would be able to bridge that communication. So that is absolutely necessary. And I think it can be written into statement that way. But I do want to make the committee aware that, I don't know if it's happening in Rhode Island, but I do know that there are a couple of schools in the country in which the schools have changing rooms, sorry, I'm past it. But essentially, the schools are facilitating a transition, a social transition at school.
Sorry, Dr. Gerso, because I know there is something. You can come back up in five minutes, everybody else is going to be worried.
There is a lawsuit against the American Academy of Pediatrics that could impact and put schools at risk.
You can bring that back up. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to address the committee at this time? Uh, yes. If you could say your name for our, everybody come back.
You stay closer to the mic next time. I'm Adeline LaGriola. Um, I'm going to thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts on the current policy regarding transgender, uh, non-conforming and transitioning students. The current disputes regarding transgender rights are taking place at a moment of enormous cultural, social, and political change for transgender people without thorough understanding of gender, gender identity, gender expression, and gender diversity. We must acknowledge the fact that this subject is highly controversial and volatile, as we see tonight. It is something that divides families, neighborhoods, governments, and even the judiciary. Therefore, we must take the time to listen carefully and respectfully to each other, even to those whom we vehemently disagree. We must study the research, ask those affected by these laws, and weigh all sides of the issues. With that in mind, I think the current protocol should be continued. It has been in place since 2016, I almost said 1916, 2016. Without incident, as far as I know, and I think that's been mentioned tonight. Doing some research on this topic, it helped me to understand the unique needs of the transgender student. There are multitude of mental health problems, especially life-threatening ones which transgender individuals struggle. Approximately forty-one percent of transgender individuals have attempted suicide at one point in their lives. By blocking access to correct bathrooms and locker rooms, fear and stigma, discrimination, and mental health issues are that, that serrated. The bathroom and locker room debate serves the constant reminder to them that even their most bodily, basic bodily functions are subjugated, devalued, and discriminated against them. In many schools, there are mutual gender bathrooms which are available to all students and for many reasons besides gender identity, students give, uh, this gives all students a choice. But if a student must use a group facility, a transgender person should feel safe and free from discrimination to do so. For those who are under the impression that the transgender person is a threat to other students, data shows that more harm is done to the transgender person entering a toilet than not, than a non-conforming one. Can you imagine a student presenting as a female, having to use the men's facility? Bullying, teasing, and even physical violence against that student is all to come in. It's the responsibility of the school to provide a safe and welcoming environment in which all students can learn regardless of their gender identity, race, religion, or social economic status. When we deny our children these basic protections, we are failing them in ways that may threaten their lives and certainly their futures. As a grandmother of a transgender grandchild, I must speak from my heart. I watched my granddaughter from a very young age present as a girl, although she was born with male genitalia. At fifteen, she is transitioning and attends a high school in Connecticut. There, she is accepted as a girl and is an active participant in school life. There are non-gender specific bathrooms and private spaces available for all students if they choose to use them. It hasn't been an easy road for her or her family. But we are loving and supportive of her and especially protective of her human right not to be discriminated in any way. As with any of my grandchildren, I accept her and love her for who she is without conditions. Even Francis has spoken to this issue and declared that LGBTQ people, LB, LGBTQ plus are still God's children. We have a long way to go in our country in accepting those who do not fit the norm and in making accommodations for them. It will take time to convince many people that LGBTQ plus rights must be protected. In the meantime, it is up to the school officials to uphold the non-discrimination laws of our country and ensure the protection and safety of each child as well.
I'm going to have to stop. You can come back up. Anybody else who wishes to address the committee? Carrie, you.
Members of the committee, committee meeting. Um, last meeting of this body on January third, I addressed the school committee on the issue of W, uh, Western Public Schools transgender, gender non-conforming, transitioning students' policy protocol. As you know, I received this on October fifth as a result of my public records request. Nobody knew about it except the former school committee. That's it. Only because of my public records request did even five of the seven of you know about it. I see, by the way, that the word "policy" has been removed from the original document that I received, um, from Rose, um, as, uh, from my public records request. Um, and I'd like to know who removed it, as if we didn't know why it was removed. Uh, but it did say "policy." I have it right here, the original document. Now it reads "protocol." Um, nice try. I, I still have the email, the original email. So anyway, what's more important this evening is threefold. What becomes of this policy, which has been hidden, unpublished anywhere? It's only now known to the public. Um, number two, why does this policy differ from what was referenced earlier that's in the high school handbook that directs, uh, students to gendered bathrooms or the, uh, uh, near the nurse's office or near the guidance office? And thirdly, does this district need a policy of this sort? And so, if so, what should it be? Those are the three questions I see. The policy before us makes no bones about what is going on. Um, it says the following, boys who identify as girls, um, can use the same lavatories and locker rooms as biological girls, as we know. Though in no way do I characterize, um, that population as dangerous, I would be remiss if I didn't cite the Loudoun County, Virginia situation where a boy who identified as a girl sexually assaulted a young lady in the girls' bathroom. The district covered it up. The young man, the, the boy was transferred to another school where it happened again. When the father subsequently went to a school committee meeting, he was roughed up and he was arrested. Okay, that has happened. Um, it's unsafe and unnatural and in my view immoral. And if policy was in effect, if, if this policy was not in effect there, there would be a zero percent chance that those two young ladies would have been assaulted. Zero. It provides, this policy provides us with definitions that normalize and integrate into our daily vernacular, terms like gender expression, gender identity, transgender, and others, demanding that everyone accept this as part of twenty-first century life. Many do not accept this. And, and it should be treated as a mental illness in some people's minds. If school staff believe there may be, there may be a sex identity issue, they are encouraged to work with, with parents, but not mandated to do so. In fact, beginning with middle school, there is really no mention of parents at all. The student and the so-called professional at school are driving the bus here from middle school on. Um, as parents are, most of the time, or sometimes, cut out, the policy allows this to happen, of a gender transition plan that's put into place for this child. Parents do not have to be informed of that. This is outrageous and wrong. This policy allows all of this to go on without the parents knowing anything. Incidentally, the suicide, um, yes, trans, uh, trans kids do commit suicide at a higher rate. But, uh, but after transitioning, according to a Swedish study, the only, the only one that I know of that's been done, that I read up on, suicide rates increased by twenty percent after transitioning. It's a higher rate of suicide post-transition. And I know I'm running out of time, so I'll be back up when everybody's done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the committee at this time? Turn back, come on up, please say your name, please. Good evening, Joe Visili, Westbury, Rhode Island. I urge the school committee to say no to the state protocol for gender policy. Write your own policy. This is why Paul had a very good point. One size does not fill all. Um, boys in girls' locker room, boys participating in women's sports. If this is acceptable to anybody, you're way off course. My observation, well, first I want to say, if this does happen with the sports arena, it's like the end of women's sports as we know it today. A biological male is much superior to a biological female. Strength, conditioning, speed, whatever you have. So, but that's way off. Anyway, my observation and interaction with citizens of this community have let me believe any such policy is not in the mainstream thought of the community. I doubt that most of the school committee has attempted to take the balls over people. Just say no to ride and write your own stuff. Yes, there are a few students with gender disorder here and they should get help. But to make it a larger issue is not reflective of the community. Making this a larger issue is like swatting a fly with a baseball bat. You as elected officials have the duty to represent your candidate constituents and support their beliefs. Yes, things have certainly gotten out of hand. Students leaving safe spaces feeling unwell. I think this is an overexaggeration. Today, I witnessed high school students, black and white, walking together in complete harmony. I know this is off topic, but I think it needs to be said. Again, I urge you, write your own policy and tell Ryan to go take a ride. Um, have a policy that is specific to Westbury and must be owned. One size does not fill all. Thank you for your attention, I appreciate you very much. Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Ann Pierce and I have a question for the resident. I'm in support of Ryan's school protocol on transgender, gender non-conforming, and transitioning students. The policy meets every best practice recommended not only by Rhode Island's Department of Education, educators, physicians, nurses, advocates for youth, and our own students. It also meets state, federal, and constitutional laws. Some insist that the protocol should be aligned with their beliefs on parental rights, but their rhetoric is an attempt to shape policy based on their beliefs around sex, gender, and family. The protocol does not aim to exclude parents, but expressly states that the desire is for parents to be kept informed about their children. But if the administration determines that notifying the family carries risks, it should be worked closely with the student and the family will be involved in the process. Some insist parents know their children better than anyone else. But is it also true that children know their parents better than anyone else? And if a child is not yet comfortable coming out to their parent or feels unsafe, why should we force them? Here are some unsettling statistics and insights from Dr. Will Giordano Perez. He's a physician and chief medical officer at Twy County Community Action Center. He's an assistant clinical professor at Brown Medical School and an expert in the field of LGBTQ issues. Quote, "I've cared for children here in Rhode Island who have been kicked out of their homes because of how they identify. In fact, forty percent of our homeless youth in Rhode Island identify as LGBTQ, despite making up only seven percent of the population. I've cared for children who have been harassed, beaten, and verbally, emotionally tormented by those closest to them all because of how they identify. Nine of ten LGBTQ youth have experienced harassment or discrimination within the past year. Those who experience discrimination and harassment are much more likely to miss school and/or drop out compared to those who do not. More than one in three LGBTQ youth reported they have been physically threatened or harmed due to their identity within the last year. Ninety-two percent of LGBTQ youth state they hear negative messages about what it means to be LGBTQ. And worst of all, in my seven years practicing as a primary care physician in Rhode Island, I've cared for children who unfortunately decided it was better to end their lives than continue living. Forty percent of LGBTQ youth made that decision to end their lives. We're up to twelve percent of the general population. As a physician, expert in the field, I would be remiss not to emphasize the importance of creating safe spaces for LGBTQ students and the dangers of outing those students to their parents without their consent. It is important to note that outing a student to their parents can put the student in danger and cause serious harm. It is crucial to provide privacy and confidentiality for our LGBTQ students. This means ensuring that students' gender identities and sexual orientations are kept confidential. They are not forced to disclose the information unless they choose to do so. These statistics demonstrate the severity of discrimination and harassment LGBTQ youth face in our schools, in our homes, in our communities, in their daily lives. If they do not move, you should use your heart as a guide to the urgent need to create safe and affirming environments for our children and use your head. Because the changes being discussed in the protocol are not legal. In most courts, they will be declared unconstitutional because, among many other reasons, they constitute sex discrimination, transgender discrimination, intentionally targeted LGBTQ citizens for disparate treatment, violation of the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, the due process clause of the United States Constitution, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen fifty-four, and Title IX of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two. Transgender students' rights is an emerging and complex area of law. Educational institutions need to be smart to ensure you are complying with their legal obligations by keeping and developing effective policies that treat transgender students with dignity and respect. All of this is to say that our identities are deeply, deeply personal. They need to be honored and they need to be respected. Many of our children have families and identities that have left them to feel quite alone in the world, in a world in which we do not honor their privacy and the rights the same way we honor those of others who are in the majority."
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the committee at this time? Sir, if you just want to say your name, please.
My name is Tom Wire, um, in Westbury. Um, I've heard talk about accommodating the trans students and so forth, but the, I haven't seen anyone ever address on the committee or even attorney Carroll, if you have a straight female student and there's a biological male that identifies as female comes in the locker room, there could be multiple girls who are not comfortable with that. What happens with them? How they, they have to put up with it? Do they have to undress in front of the biological male? Is, is that, have I ever addressed and accommodating those who are uncomfortable with that situation? Um, also, um, I just, I, I care this is a policy kindergarten through twelve. Apparently it's a policy maybe pre-K in Westbury. I know my family that left town because their four-year-old son was told by employee, if he wants to be a girl, he can be a girl. And, and also was informed, he's a Christian, that the Bible is not real. So just, let's, let's be truthful here with what's going on here. This is an attack on the family unit, the traditional family unit, and those of faith. This is all an attack. That should not have happened. They left town. So I hope you're happy with what you're doing. This is wrong. And secondly, I'm familiar with how the state of Rhode Island works. Very top-heavy. I used to deal a lot with DM regulations. They used to deal a lot with DM regulations. And they were, how would you create regulations? And a lot of these...
You need to address the committee, Attorney Carroll.
A lot of times, they would create regulation that they would be taking the court rather than the bill's association, and the law would be determined to be unconstitutional, unlawful. So, you know, to have the commission, to have the empower to be a dictator and dictate to school committees in every county or town, this is the way it's got to be, is wrong. That is not democratic at all. And, Mr. Over, I'm disappointed with your concern about, oh, it's the money, it's the money. So, we're more concerned about the money than what's doing what's right.
Thank you. Mrs. Button, state your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Holt Smith, I live in Westbury. I think my first comment is, I've heard, we've been talking now for, I don't know, well over an hour, and I've yet to hear a problem. I've heard hypotheticals, I've heard this could happen, I've heard it might happen in Virginia. I've heard, I have yet to hear that there is a problem in Westbury, that this policy is not working. And I'd be very happy to hear, I mean, I wouldn't be happy to hear that. But I think if we're going to spend this much time on a non-existent problem, or at least I'd like to know if there's a problem. I mean, that's my first point. My second point is, and I don't actually know how to say this, but the bathroom argument. You know, I'm old enough to remember the Equal Rights Amendment, Phyllis Schlafly, women in the military, unisex bathrooms. That's why we can't have an ERA. We have women in the military, we have unisex bathrooms, we don't have an Equal Rights Amendment. I'm a lesbian, I cannot tell you how many times I've heard the discussion about how gay people shouldn't be in the same restroom as straight people because we're dangerous. So, I had same-sex people in the same-sex bathroom. Now, I'm hearing fictitious boys that pretend they're girls that come into bathrooms and assault girls. If those people are assaulting, I mean, obviously, they're not transgender because they're identifying as a woman, but if they're pretending to, well, that's a problem, but that's not the problem of a transgender community. So, I mean, I'll say this again, it seems to me there are lots of issues that this school court has to deal with. If this is a real issue, then I would really like to hear an actual problem that people have seen in the schools and that this policy is not working. I thought the policy is quite respectful of every student in Westbury schools, and I spotted that we're keeping it the way it is and moving on to some of the issues that are really problems that are affecting the education of our students. Thank you.
Any other suspicious requests this time? Just please state your name. Thank you.
Maria Parker West, from Rhode Island. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening on this very important subject. This policy negatively affects all of us, directly or indirectly, and so should never have seen the light of day without our approval. A major responsibility, I think you would all agree, of all educators who's a pretend and on down, is to protect each student's right to privacy and safety, period. As an educator, and parent, and grandparent, I'd like to share a few thoughts with you tonight. Since their beginnings, sports teams have separated boys from girls, and for good reason, to ensure their safety and privacy during games in locker rooms, bathrooms, and showers. A huge majority of Americans oppose any effort to change this, as parents nationwide, whose eyes have been opened, challenge and denounce this movement and these kinds of policies to interfere with their right and duty to promote the good of their children and to eliminate their exploitation. Another goal of this right policy, which stands first from Obama and now from President Biden's Title IX laws, prevents educators on a case-by-case basis from disclosing to parents a student's social transitioning or gender status without the permission of the student. This drives a wedge between parent and child by encouraging vulnerable children to make a possible life-altering, serious decision without the guidance of their parents. A decision which may not be temporary or reversible, and possibly resulting in heartbreak, alienation, or a lifetime of sorrow for the student and his or her family. This puts the school in a position of interfering with the family life of students. These policies are a recipe for disaster and attempt to transcend limitations established by God and nature since the beginning of time. And word about parents' rights, cultures worldwide have always understood that since they have conferred life on their children, parents have the original, primary, and inalienable right to educate them in conformity with their moral and religious convictions. Parents are best equipped to provide information about sex with great delicacy, clarity, and precaution to each case of the chance to develop it. Parents also have the right to be informed about the structure, content, and forms of sex education being tried and to remove their children whenever this education does not correspond to their principles. No educator should interfere with this right, but should be sensitive to the rights and duties of parents in this interim area. The very serious ideological agenda of this policy by federal, and now our state and local authorities is morally bankrupt and has no place in our education system and its employees, for it exploits vulnerable children and keeps parents in the dark as they impart to our in experimental sexual information, which disturbs the natural serenity and hints of innocence of period of the child's life. And to all your concerns that I've heard, I don't recall ever having voted on this law, which affects all of our children. I believe our school committee is definitely being pressured by RIDE without a vote of the people on this very serious matter. Let's do what's right for Westbury students. And I'd like to leave you with a thought. Whatever happened to childhood innocence, decency, modesty, chastity, truth, and goodness? I hope to bring them all back and put them first and foremost in our lives so we can once again enjoy happier, well-adjusted children. Thank you.
Is there any other suspicious requests this time? Turn back to the monitor and state your name, please.
Good evening. Lieutenant Commander Frank Paulson, Westbury, Rhode Island. First off, thank you everyone for taking the time to state this kind of important topic. Our wife and I have been in Westbury two years ago, and we very much love this town. And I very much appreciate the healthy conflict happening at this level to tackle this important matter. And the speaker before me talked about, maybe there's a problem, maybe there's not. I would offer that waiting for a problem to arise, this is not my healthiest approach. I do think that council committee, excuse me, should very much pursue creating some policy. I have a seventeen-month-old son, not at school yet, and appreciate all the emotional going things you do to have your own children in school currently, fighting a fight. I don't envy the challenge that you guys have to go through to create the policy, navigate the law. It's very difficult, but I think that the time is warranted. The opening of the meeting, there was one from Cease, Hannah Bupier, is what I took it as, was all of this per call or else. You know, that probably wasn't always match, but that was what I heard, that was the perception. And this is why I mentioned that you came into COVID during that time. That vibe very much reminded me of that time. All of this policy or else. A lot of my fellow service members were not allowed to stay at the Navy or at their services because they didn't follow that policy. I think that we should learn as a society from that time. This is an awesome opportunity to be able to create a policy for their kids, not letting them stay down, my kids. So, I wanted to appeal to the committee from one government position to another. It's just that I can understand having a policy in law place on it. I'm in charge of the reactive for the Navy. I have rules that I have to follow, I have instructions, policies that I don't necessarily create, but I have to follow. I have to be able to make sure that all of those things are correct. So, if I'm speaking, sorry, in terms of the education, which you can't control as a committee, please forgive me, I'm still learning what you can't get to as a team. But I do have to create my own training. I have a class in DFT sailors at any time that I'm responsible for. I have to create training for them in terms of what's important, operating for reactive. You creating equipment, whatever you can, if you will. Part of the conversation, I think, revolves around what is a child's identity. So, I wanted to create a, have an analogy from the Navy, some of these twenty-year-olds that go into the Navy join because they don't know what they're going to do for them. So, if there are people in their twenties that don't know what they're going to do and don't know their purposes, that for sure applies to children as well. So, another analogy that I wanted to make was, in terms of the process, we mentioned that sometimes kids don't necessarily have the opportunity to question their identity in a safe space. Not willing, kids have the parents that they can, but create a policy, you have to sometimes cover the 1% that only applies to people that's part of a policy. So, if somebody wanted to question their identity, which I never regret to do in that conversation of all its gender, similar to, I want to say, buying a firearm, where there's a waiting period, I think that if you should decide yes on a policy to create, part of that policy should address if the child does bring up a question of their identity. There should be some sort of intro lock-in time that the family assess the question before they're allowed to go get that surgery. So, the blast of arms, I should think, should apply to that, a life-altering decision like a surgery. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your service. Any other suspicious requests this time? Okay, so seeing none of Dr. Patel, did you want to come up and finish? Do you have additional time if you want to use that?
I can see, I'd be very appreciative. I believe it's important for the school committee and professionals to know that the validity of how to best approach students identified as transgender is largely dependent upon the endorsement of the American Academy of Pediatrics. At the end of October, the American Academy of Pediatrics was named in a lawsuit by a detransitioner. And I'll explain why I bring this up after, I just briefly want to say. The lawsuit was filed in Russell County Superior Court at the end of October 2023. It accuses the American Academy of Pediatrics of engaging in a civil conspiracy to develop, promote, and ultimately profit off what has become the prevailing American medical treatment model for pediatric gender care. A model that the suit alleges is based on a fraudulent and misleading representation of scientific research. Now, some of what the attorneys and the detransitioner have to back up, there are six comprehensive international scientific reviews of pediatric transition. That means puberty blockers, prostate hormones, cluster minus surgeries. These have been evaluated worldwide by the experts. Six published comprehensive studies. At best, pediatric transition may be considered experimental. What this means is that the claim that these blockers, prostate hormones, and surgeries actually help the kids is likely not true. We do not have solid scientific evidence. How does that pertain to schools? You could say, well, schools aren't promoting puberty blockers or prostate hormones or surgeries. The issue, again, gets back to disclosure to parents. If you're being a bridge, that's obviously, that is an issue. However, if schools are actually facilitating social transition of the child while they're in school behind parents' backs, social transition leads to medical transition, and that child, five years down the line, in their twenties, mid-twenties, they can turn around if they realize that, I've always been female, right, I've always been male. I was, this is malpractice. The schools can be liable. If they kept active social transition secret from parents, they facilitated, it is within the realm of possibility that schools could be liable. It's just another we want to keep in mind. I wanted to, I do have copies from the New York Sun, which gives a very accurate explanation of the lawsuit. Lawsuit itself is public knowledge, it's filed, it's available online. And I have the URL here for you.
Jeff, if you want to, Dr. Strachey, just take over. We'll get this fast on that.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mrs. Labriella, you can quit getting to finish, if you want five minutes.
No.
You'll sit. Thank you. And Mr. Carroll, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. To do, there were several more, in my view, egregious components to this policy, but I'm just going to highlight a couple. Policy states that a name change, student decides to change his or her name, it necessarily denotes a pronoun change as well. Calling a boy or girl's name is one thing, but calling a boy or a girl is a completely different thing, in my view. It's compelled speech, and as we talked about before, it's absolutely a First Amendment violation. Attorney Carroll knows this, but she knows it, she leaves it in the policy anyway. Rhode Island's Classic League also allows boys to play on most girls' teams and vice versa, as we know, it's unsafe and unfair. It robs biological girls of the bareness of play, as boys, people who stated, are bigger, stronger, faster. It can also rob girls of opportunities later in life, at the collegiate level, of scholarship opportunities and the like. It's also unsafe, as we witnessed about a month or two ago, when a young lady, a field hockey player at Dyke Mahobeth High School in Massachusetts, was playing a game against a team that had a boy on it, and the boy hurled the ball, hit the ball with a stick, and knocked the girl's teeth right out of her head. Would that have happened, had that boy not been on the field? Probably not. Probably not. I have engaged, or begun to engage, Mike Lunny, the executive director at Rhode Island Classic League. I'll be talking with our principal at Westbury High School as well about the policy of the Rhode Island Classic League and how we can change that. Thirdly, in any gender segregated school activities, students may participate as per their sexual identity at school that was brought up earlier. In other words, boys wanting to, boys identifying as girls may even so much as bump in the same room as biological girls. Wrong, very wrong, dangerous. A boy, no matter how much he wants to be a girl, thinks he's a girl, dresses like a girl, or acts like a girl, will never be a girl, never. The 99% of students who are not confused with their sex cannot be discriminated against to accommodate the 1% who are. All students deserve safety, comfort, and privacy, all students. However, it is neither customary nor lawful to accommodate 1% while putting the other 99% in a dangerous or uncomfortable position. As a good friend recently said, "Your rights end at my nose." This policy is nothing more than a combination of broad guidance, the hijacking and weaponization of Title IX and FERBA. of both Title IX and FER book. No one cares what Angelica Fontaine-Green's interpretation of the statute is. She's not a lawyer. She's not even qualified to do the position she's doing now. I'm not interested in what her interpretation is, what the courts will be. This policy, Title IX, was enacted to protect our females against discrimination based on sex. This policy not only doesn't protect them, it mandates discrimination against our females based on sex. We know the difference between right and wrong, we're not stupid people. Though we may differ on other issues, certainly, we have to find common ground here on this We have lost all common sense with a policy like this. So, tonight, or whatever, you have a chance to make a statement in Rhode Island. You can tell RIDE, Angelica Fontaine-Green, and the U.S. Department of Education, and probably the ACLU, that this does not work for us. The lawsuits will come, I promise you. RIDE and the U.S. Department of Education will hold bags of money over your head, but you will have done the right thing by making your own policy so all of these kids are Once you rescind this policy, as I said, you'll be sued, but what you'll also be doing is what our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, wants you to do, and that is protect all of these kids.
That's tonight, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Committee members, if you respond, any of the.
Thank you for coming up, letting us know and refuse. I did mention about money. You can't go forward and change the policy that goes against state laws and not expect that there be some ramifications, which could be the loss of funds. You have to look at that and determine whether it's worth it or not. Now, the protocol doesn't make the school system promoting anything, because this is how we deal with this subject. We deal with it, the student, we deal with the parents together. And in times when there is a conflict between the student and the parent, we do, we offer encouragement, but we don't force them. You know, we try to guide them with the parents. This is not encouraging it, it's how we deal with this issue that we're presented with. And I just like to say, if we were to develop a policy, it would look a lot like that, unless we're willing to say that we're not going to work with this. We're not going to work with this. We're gonna say, no, you can't do this, you can't, you can't be transgender in our school system, because that's the opposite of this policy. This policy doesn't say you can be, you should be, it can be, and this is how we work.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to respond? And Mrs. Bell.
So, I do wanna say thank you to everybody who loved JCP. And I think it also, in a way, we've already kind of modeled what this has to look like. It is gonna take, it's gonna be a while, we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to hear from students, we're gonna have to hear from parents, families, community members. And I think something everybody has to remind of, this isn't going to change tonight, whether it's something you support or you don't support. So, I think everybody has to be willing to have these conversations in a respectful manner, and what you have to say is valid, because it's a part of how we make decisions, but it has to be done in a respectful way to make sure that, again, even if it's just one percent of what exists in our school, that there's not the chance of them feeling like they don't have a space here within our district. And at the same time, we take care of the students who do make up the majority and make sure that as we do these things, we sit back and say, how does this apply to the students who don't identify with this narrative, and what's this provide us with, to make sure we're protected as well?
Anybody else who wishes to respond? Thank you, everybody who will sit.
I'd also just like to say thank you to everybody. I do appreciate hearing everybody's input, and it's nice to see a lot of people here And hopefully, we will continue to address this topic. Thank you.
So, I just want to reiterate, again, thank you everybody for coming up. Obviously, an important topic, but great advice, we need to stop, just kind of stop the crowd, or kind of hear, hear, we all got it, and hear somehow, but we really had some difficult conversations to do, we can do. So, thank you.